Hey there. Good to see you here, all right? The court, nice to meet you.
Hello, I'm doing bad. And I'm laying down like a little rubber.
I'm just a house guest. What's that? Uh, actually, I would like to be tabled for next month.
Yes, that's fine.
I'd rather. That feels like we're taking our award in front of all the people. This one is a man. Root. What's your dog? You had a dog? Oh, man. We're gonna go with him. And that's four hours. It's a little bit of a outside. I thought it was a public.
How you doing? Good to see you here, all right? The court, nice to meet you.
No, I don't have. Okay. And I'm laying down like a little rubber.
Really, I hope.
I have two, this time, it's for the black.
I'm a house guest.
So, are we tabled when it's been and just going to the next meeting? Okay, I'll just stand and say that.
Thank you so very much.
Yeah.
A lot.
I'm gonna ask to go ahead and table the public hearing and the vote. That way, everybody can. No problem at all.
How you doing?
Good, how are you? Good to see you again.
I have to hurry my work, but this is just, so this whole thing. Can you get?
And I knew what you said, but I was.
No. We just assumed.
I have one more coming your way.
Hammond City Council Public Hearing, July 11, 2023, 5:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wales.
Public hearing item number one.
An ordinance to approve a request by Hammond's Best LLC owner and J.D. Klein applicant to rezone 207 South Cherry Street per survey by Max Bowden, Inc., dated 4/25/23, from RM-2 to MX-CVD District 2.
This is an item before you tonight for public hearing and for potential vote on final adoption. It is a request to rezone from multifamily to mixed commercial business district. The reason that this one is selected to go to mixed-use commercial business district is because that is what the adjacent property is also zoned. There is a little bit different zoning across the street, as you'll notice, that's linked up on the map, and I should have pulled that up on the computer. If anybody wants to see that, we'll put that out in just a second. You can see in the description on the report towards the bottom there, the, to the north is that zoning that we just described, mixed commercial central business district. To the south is multifamily. To the west is mixed commercial, central business district, and commercial neighborhood. And then to the east is mixed commercial. If you'll remember too, the reason that there is a variation between commercial business district versus commercial, it depends on how close you are to the core of downtown and to the parking malls, because there is a difference in the parking requirements for those two zonings. So this one is on Cherry Street and is closer to the downtown area, and that's why it falls within that specification. The owners have an intent to establish a family center there, kind of like a community center. They talked about offering art classes and maybe some retail shop for a family or children's clothing or those kinds of things. And the zoning commission did vote in favor, unanimous vote, four to zero, to support this. Absent was one of the commissioners, otherwise it may have been a different vote. So if there's any questions, the last page of your packet does describe the full differences of uses between the two zonings. So on that very last page, if you just want to see a quick comparison between the two zonings of multifamily versus mixed commercial.
I have a question. I've had some people reach out about this, and one of the main things asked for this one and the next one is parking issues. And what consideration is there to that?
That's kind of what we were just describing, the difference between mixed commercial versus mixed commercial central business district. Central business district is established when they are closer to the downtown parking malls and that core area. And so there's adequate parking seen between that area and, for instance, like Morrison Alley and some other things that are nearby this area to support that parking.
They have less, they have less requirements?
That's correct. That's correct. There still will be some parking that is required, but it's not the same requirement as in just mixed commercial, for instance. So the parking requirements between these two that we're looking at are different.
Gotcha.
They're also gonna be different based on what that final use is. So when they come in for, even if they, you know, even, let's say both get rezoned, they still have to come before the city and fill out the business license package. And in that package, the actual use that is proposed at the site has different parking requirements based on that use. So for instance, a restaurant typically requires a lot more parking, or something that's more retail oriented has a lot more parking than perhaps something that's more office-related. Those are all defined in the Unified Development Code.
It's hard to tell from pictures. Is there, is there any parking?
I don't, I don't know offhand. It would, it would depend on how, yeah, there's.
There's a driveway on the south side. Has an old garage behind it. A single car garage. Probably get two cars up there. Fourth micro.
Sir, could you come up to the microphone and give us your name and address, please?
I live in the hood over there. Bill Thompson. Uh, all my life. So I can tell you about the bad parts about the particular neighborhood.
Sir, give us, give us your name, please, and address.
Bill Thompson. 202 South Holly Street. There, the insurance company has bought the property just to the north and made parking there, I believe, right? Okay. You have a lot there that, what's, what's the size of that lot? Sixty by a hundred and twelve?
Seventy-five by one hundred.
I'm sorry?
Looks like seventy-five by a hundred.
Seventy-five by a hundred, and the house takes up a lot of that.
This lot is, yes.
This lot is, that was the one on.
Two oh four South Cherry, two oh seven South Cherry, the old Starne's place, seventy-five by a hundred. How many cars you think you can get in there?
They are.
On that south side?
So that, that's what we're establishing, is that they don't have parking requirements with, with commer, with core business district CBD, with the central business district, it doesn't have the same parking requirements that are of other things that are zoned differently, because it is assumed that they're close enough to the main parking malls and to the Morrison Alley area and to.
Morrison Alley, that's, look, look how far away that is, Morrison Alley, that's a block and a half. There's no parking in Morrison Alley.
There's parking. I'm just letting you know.
Not, not open parking. Do you, do you hang in that area for the resident?
Yes.
Do you know how crowded it gets? Okay, all right. So we got a driveway that's a hundred foot, if you take the old garage out, by maybe twenty-five foot wide, right there?
It, it would depend on how they associate their site. I'm not here to speak about how they're going to develop their site, because we don't know that.
Okay, all right. Okay. That's the deal on that one. You know, when it's, when they have funerals, all that traffic in there is jammed up. It doesn't lend itself to anything other than maybe, maybe make a duplex out of the old Perrone Place on the corner. I think there's, what, five apartments in that old property that's south of there, the old Perrone Place, that the cars are hanging?
I'm not sure how many apartments are in.
Yeah, okay, well, that's sharp parking, too. Every time I went to go do something, they wanted three parking places for every square foot of the building. I mean, I, I don't understand how we can do this. I know that, that guy's not gonna let you park on the, on that grass.
This is not my property.
Oh, okay.
I'm just here telling you what happened at this meeting.
Okay, thank you, that's fine.
Mr. Thomas, I'm gonna ask you a question. How you doing, sir?
Good.
Good, good. Uh, I've been a resident in Hammond a long time, and I like what you said. This is me talking, right here.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've been a resident in Hammond a long time, but I like what you said. And that's what a lot of people don't realize. When you got ready to do something, they told you how many parking spots you needed, right?
First thing, off the bat.
Right off the bat.
Right off the bat.
Yeah, and so I'm gonna ask you this question. Are you for this or are you against this?
Well, it really doesn't sway me one way or the other. The only problem is, like I say, is I've got trucks now. We got a freight truck that comes in and so forth, that we need to be, have access through there. Now they've even taken part of the parking lane on Morris Street and put flower beds there, so flower bed, so there's no parking there on the corners. If you look down at the Wells Fargo Building, that, that would be the 200 block of Morris Street, cut it out into the street. Now trucks can't even get down Cypress Street.
Okay.
They can't come off of Cypress and get on Morris.
Okay.
I mean, we, we, you know, we gotten boxed in there.
You have a business right there? You have a?
On, on Holly Street, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And President Kip brought it up two weeks ago about what are they gonna do? You know, this is one of the questions, because with Mr. Thomas, I agree with him. Every time I got ready to bill something, the first thing they ask, I'm talking about, they tell me, the city tell me how many parking spots I need, whether I wanted to or not. So whatever I was planning on building, I had to make sure I had enough parking, not only for the resident, but in case the people wanted to visit them. And so these are things that, garly-bolly, marly-bolly, these are things that we can't keep coming up with, you know? We sitting here letting these people come up with these projects, and the idea is in their head. Nothing on paper, and so, and it's not even in my district. So whatever the council person vote for, that's what I'm gonna do, because I have no interest in this. So I have no, no leg in the fight, what they say, no dog in the fight or none of that. But the people, and this is what I do when it comes to my district, I listen to my constituents. If they say then tell me they want something or they disagree with something, I go with them, because those are the people that voted for me. And so I go with the majority. So I appreciate you coming up here saying this, and thank you for being a long resident and a business in Hammond also.
Well, the next thing is too, isn't that part of the downtown development district? That line cuts in through to catch my property, but zigzags around other property and cuts the bank out and goes on down toward, is that part of the downtown development district?
Anybody knows? Lacy, is that part of the, is that part of the DDD or no?
I don't think it's. On, on Cherry Street, is that one in, at the corner?
It used to cut in the center of Cypress, and somehow or another, it zigzagged around Mike Canals and the funeral home and this, that, and the other, and took Cherry and cut in there somewhere. But, but they didn't keep it as part of the downtown development district, because it was a residence, the best I recall. That seemed like that downtown development district cut center of the block.
The district goes to Holly on Coleman.
So this property, this property is in the DDD? The, the property that's, uh, right now on the subject right now?
Two oh seven South Cherry.
That, that's in it, correct? Okay, yes.
Is it in the downtown, on the south side or on the north side of Cherry? Uh, I'm sorry, on the south property line or on the north property line?
The whole area is considered in the district, because the district goes beyond the address. It goes all the way to, um, yeah, Coleman. So I don't know exactly what your question is, but the address and personal question.
It was zigzagged at one time through there.
I have the map, if you'd like to look at it.
Okay. Any questions?
Perhaps we should hear from the applicant?
Yes.
So we talk about what's proposed.
The applicant here?
South Cherry. I'm business partners with J.D.
Yeah, could you give us your name and address, sir?
Terry Adams. I live on General Lot, General Lot Estates.
You say Terry?
Terry Adams, yes.
Adams. Mr. Adam, do you have any idea of exactly what you're gonna put on this particular lot?
Yeah, you explained it just perfect. It's basically a spot for the community. There'll be free coffee and tea served in the front room, and then one of the rooms will be art classes for kids, basically like a safe place for kids and toddlers, families. So it's pretty simple, really. In the back, maybe some, some games. We were thinking for the parking that we could utilize kind of what's already around there, like you had mentioned.
So over here, the, the grassy area right there on the city servitude side, what's the plan for that area and where the gravel is and, and the grass is? Is that the, the city has plans to pave all that in the front on, on the side of the road or?
City?
To install parallel parking?
Yeah, yeah, where there's grass and everything at right now. Okay.
I think that's on the plans.
It'll be up to. If you approve it. No.
So this would be a, a business and, right, you guys want to open a business here?
Yes.
Okay. And you said free coffee and tea, or is it gonna be like a coffee shop?
Oh, no, no coffee shop. The, that front room will be more for families, parents to kind of talk, get to know each other. And the back rooms will be like maybe sewing class, art classes for kids, and then around back, maybe some games, really a spot for the community.
Terry, for the record, what's your address at General Lot Estates?
Four two three three six, uh, Lane, very, in the very back.
And what's the age group, sir?
For the.
The age group for the kids?
For the kids.
Yeah.
I mean toddler to maybe, I guess, ten, eight to ten.
Yeah. Well, me myself, I think that's a good idea, because we having issues with kids right now, so they definitely need something to do. So I think that's a good idea, but it's not in my district. I wish you come to my district and do the same thing. We got the room, we got the parking, and I heard you say community. So just for those community kids, no other kids?
I mean, for kids that wanna, there's a, definitely a market around here for kids that are homeschooled, that there's just nothing for them to go and do. Me and my wife, we have a son with autism that's four, will probably have like a sensory room for kids with disabilities and stuff to kind of have a spot to play as well.
Okay, and just in case this don't pass, now you think about District Three, okay?
All right, I got you.
Okay.
Is this a nonprofit or is it?
No, it's.
Okay, okay.
We'll have bills to pay for sure, yeah.
Anyone else have any questions? Anyone else from the public?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Public hearing item number two, gonna be tabled, right?
Yeah, I don't know, do, does she need to read it off? We're gonna ask for this item to be tabled.
Yeah, if it's tabled, you can just.
Okay.
Not necessary to read it off, you can just have a motion.
All right.
Uh, the owner is asking for this one to be tabled. She had a scheduling conflict and was, is out of town tonight, not able to be here. I just found that out.
I make a motion that we table this item to our next meeting. Second.
Yes, sir.
Do I still do roll call?
Yeah, you do the roll call, yeah.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Hammond City Council, regular session agenda, July 11, 2023, 5:48 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
And Councilman Wales.
Aye.
For our prayer this evening, I'm gonna ask Minister Newton, Curtis Newton, to come up and lead us in prayer.
Gracious and glorious Father, we come before you this evening, thankful for giving us another day, Father God, one that we had nothing to do with, but you chose to give it to us. We pray, Father God, that your Spirit would rest, rule, and abide upon these proceedings, that you, that we would do everything decent and in order, and that you would be happy with everything that goes on here today. These and all things we ask, in the masculine, marvelous name of Jesus, we pray, we thank you, and we love you. Amen.
Amen. For our pledge of allegiance, all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda, can I get our approval of our minutes from our meeting from June 27, 2023, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
This time we'll have a presentation of our housing committee chair, Ms. Karen.
Karen Walston, 404 South Cherry Street, Hammond, in the hood. In your, uh, in your packet or is a memo that the housing committee has sent to you with an attachment that has some suggested or recommended revisions to the position of city planner? So I'd like to read to you what, what we've been doing and what we're all about. As you, as you recall, the city council created a housing enhancement committee to review the Hammond Housing Strategic Growth Study, the results of which were presented to you, council members, earlier this year. And based on our review, we are to develop an action plan to move forward on the study's recommendations. The Housing Enhancement Committee is a small group of seasoned professionals in real estate and economic development, housing, city planning, and community involvement, including myself. The members are Mr. Reverend, uh, Bill R. Milton, sorry, Tony Jackson, Mandy Braywick, and Ron Matthews and Bishop Renee Soleil, who could not be here this evening. One of the key Housing Strategic Growth Study administrative recommendations is to hire a qualified city planner. Based on the committee's initial review of other study, of the other study recommendations, we have found that having a qualified city planner onboard as soon as possible is imperative to move forward on implementing most of the study's recommendations. To assist the city in finding the most qualified person for this position, we recommend revisions to the currently posted city planner position description as we've, in, in your packet, we have, where we've made the revisions. These revisions are based on similar sized city, cities' position descriptions, the Housing Strategic Growth Study recommendation, and a review by a staff member of Louisiana Planning and Development Commission. The committee, committee's recommended revisions elevate the role of the city planner in city administration. We, but number one, we recommend that the position description increase the years of planning experience from two to five years and supervis, supervisory experience from six months to two years. And two, we recommend that the city planner report directly to the city administrator. That would be, that would require moving city planning from under the building department where it is now. We would also like to note that attracting a qualified city planner candidate requires compensation that reflects this elevated position. The Housing Strategic Growth Study recommends hiring a consultant to update the comprehensive master plan in order to reflect current city goals and objectives, particularly with regards to housing and neighborhood revitalization. Hammond's first comprehensive master plan was completed in 2011 and has not been updated since. As we all know, a lot has changed in the last 12 years. The process of updating the comprehensive master plan involves community input into the future of Hammond. Also, its update is crucial to obtaining state and federal funding, funding to assist in planning and implementing many of the Housing Strategic Growth Study recommendations. With this in mind, we have highlighted in our recommended provisions to the city planner position, uh, description, the update of the comprehensive master plan as a key responsibility of the new planner, the new city planner. The committee would also like to recommend that once city planner candidates are identified, the city set up a selection committee that would include two Housing Enhancement Committee members. As the city council has directed, we will continue to work on an action plan based on the Housing Strategic Growth Study recommendations and periodically report to you on our progress. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you too, Ms. Karen. Anyone have any questions?
I just.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna give an update from the administration side, so we received this on Thursday. We've already made the changes on the job description. We actually reached out to the headhunters, who are already conducting this work of finding a city planner for us, and double-checked with them to make sure, because the council had authorized that additional $20,000 to come into the base salary, we wanted to make sure that changing the years of requirement was not going to put us out, out of funding realm, so we double-checked with them, we're all good on that. So with that additional funding that they, we notified them as soon as y'all passed the budget, that they were good. So they've been out looking for additional candidates now. Their goal is to bring back three candidates to us to make a selection from at that point. So they're beating the bushes for us. We've already made all the changes on the job description that were recommended. We, we tweaked a little bit on the wording, but we, we did not, we did emphasize that this person would be updating the master, the, the comprehensive plan, but we did not say it was just this one. We said it would be both comprehensive plans and specific smaller plans as well, so that it's not this one task versus other things, so.
Um, what, what company is? Um, what, what company is that, that y'all hired, uh?
I do not know offhand. I can find that out for you and have it tomorrow.
Okay, that'll be good. Um, yeah, um, Ms. Karen, I was, you know, I think this is, these are all great, great points and, and revisions that, that you proposed in here. The group did, the group's doing a great job. I've sat in on a couple of meetings. Um, very, very happy and pleased and, and, you know, a lot of hard work and, uh, volunteer work from everyone on the committee. And, um, these are some good revisions and some of them are straight from the, uh, consultant recommendations. So I think this should definitely, uh, help get, you know, get a good city planner, um, you know, to help the city out. So I'm, I'm very impressed and, and happy with this presentation.
Thank you. I, I do want to ask though, um, about the city planner getting out from underneath the building department. When we did our research, uh, as a committee, we looked at other cities and how their, where their city planner fits in, and all of, none of them had him under a building department, they had it as a separate, uh, entity. So we're, we're kind of unique in having it under buildings, so I just want to make that point.
Um, that, that change, if it's, if that change could be made, is that, um, is that on the charter written like that? Or why is that like that, Andre? Is there, what, what a way, what, what's the best way to maybe modify that if needed?
Well, that's just administrative decisions.
Okay, all right.
So I, we, we want to make that recommendation, just because we, in our research, if, if, anyone who's doing anything, and this is in southern cities, it's not, you know, it's not like all over the United States. We looked at southern cities of our size, and city planning was always, had its own, and then of course coordinated, you know, but that they reported to the, the city administrator or CFO, I mean, CAO or whatever. Okay, just to let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And in fact, they do, uh, we do work hand in hand with, um, with that position. It's there. Unfortunately, we don't have a building that compensates all departments. That would be nice if the city of Hammond had a, the old dirt cheap type building where you could be a one-stop shop. So it's really located there, but we work hand in hand with that, that department.
I was actually referring to when you go and look on the website.
Website.
You have building and then you have planning underneath it. So why can't there be planning as a separate?
She's referring to like the chart breakup, like having it, not per se building or setup, but just mainly like everybody report to that.
It's not that they have to have a new.
That's very easy.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't have to be a new facility, it's just that, that.
The, the way the chart broke down where the city planner is kind of like the head of that department, but then reports to the administrator and coordinate.
The building is, it's its own department and then they coordinate.
Right now, I think it's underneath the building, I guess, permitting office, uh, the building inspector. So that's kind of what she was referring to rearranging the chart a little bit.
Easy fix.
Again, we're gonna thank the Housing Committee for their report. Final adoption of ordinance, old business, number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to revise Article eight dash one dash seven of the Unified Development Code regarding the definition of the properties included in the Hammond Historical District, Heather Diebold.
Yes, Heather Diebold.
I am the Historic District Coordinator.
Um, this is to follow up on the hearing that was, or the matter that was tabled at the public hearing on November ninth of twenty twenty-one. Um, the main issue was that, uh, I think you guys were concerned that possibly the public wasn't being given enough notice um, of what was taking place. So since then, we have done what you've asked. Um, we went ahead and we sent out, um, certified letters and got our green cards back. On top of that, um, I also made sure to hang up letters on the property itself. Um, and then I also sent out certified letters for the meeting for this evening. Um, we held two forums. One was on Tuesday, May sixteenth at five P.M., and one was on Friday, May nineteenth at eleven A.M. And for the first one, I received one email that was from Mr. Brian Gorkis, asking where his property was located on the map. I emailed him back and nothing from there. Um, I received a phone call from Mr. Joe Wong, asking whether or not his property was located in it and if he got brought into it, what that would mean. And I told him that any current permits that he had, it would not affect that. And then the last one was at that actual first public forum, we did have, um, Mr., um, George Anthem, Jr., who showed up on behalf of, um, First Christian Church. And, um, he was just asking whether or not specifically, if being in the historic district would affect churches in general. And we advised him that they would not, churches would not be treated any differently. So we're here today to ask you to please, um, help us clarify and change the language.
Anyone else here from the public on this item? Any questions or concerns from anyone on the council?
Yes, okay.
Sal Nicholas, the thirty-six oh seven Highway one ninety west. I'm not too familiar with this, uh, final adoption on the Article eight one seven. Uh, I don't, I don't really know much about it, but I, I was talking, I had talked to Ms., uh, I talked with her on the telephone.
I'm Sal.
Oh, hi, I'm Ms. Shaw.
Okay, well, we haven't had a chance to meet, but I had a lot of questions about the historic district. And, uh, I mean, y'all aware of what's going on apparently, but I don't know anything about it. But her and I had already made a commitment to talk about some of the revisions in, in the historic district. Because we got a lot of people have complaints about it. And, uh, so I just wanted to share that with y'all. If y'all aware of it, uh, maybe y'all can enlighten me a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Wells?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Sal, one of the issues that, that I had with them, I didn't think they gave, they didn't give a long notice to letting people know what was going on. And ma'am, when did this here started? When did y'all first brought this up? What was the date?
Yeah, so it was initially brought before the council in, um, I believe it was introduced in October of twenty twenty-one. It was brought forward for public hearing, November ninth of twenty twenty-one. Um, since then, we had our annual retreat in Jan, uh, I'm sorry, April of this year, and we decided it was ample time that we bring this forward again, to bring continuity to the perimeter of our district. And so, um, I sent out notices for our first public hearing, like I said, I believe that was on the sixteenth. Um, those certified letters were sent out on May eighth, notifying of both of our public forum hearings that would take place. They were not only in person, but they were also live-streamed. And all the information was in the letters of if you had any, if you had any questions, please call me. Also during our forums, during the streaming, um, I provided my email address, my phone number, my cellphone number, if anybody had any questions, and I received nothing, so.
Okay, so, uh, thank you, ma'am. That was one of the things that I had talked about, because I don't think they had, gave everybody a notice. But I want to thank you all, since twenty twenty-one, that they've been working on this project. And here it is, twenty twenty-three, and it goes to show you, and I mean this, uh, you all wanted to do it the right way, even though y'all wanted to pass, in twenty twenty-one, it didn't pass. And I want to thank y'all, and, and this the things that, you know, that y'all should be clapping for the people, because they had a lot of patience to wait that many years. I don't have that much patience, but I want to thank y'all for being patient and doing everything that I had asked you all to do, and I appreciate it, and I am in favor of whatever y'all trying to do. Thank you so much.
Anyone else from the public? Could you step to the podium, please? Give us your name and address.
I'm Rita Mashburn, uh, steward of the property located at five hundred West Thomas Street, Hammond. I am, uh, I'm not really quite sure about the vision of the historical district. My, uh, first interaction with them was in nineteen ninety-seven. Previous year, I was burned out of my home, my business. And, um, I got approached by one of the members of the historic district who informed me that the awnings that were on my building were not approved. Kind of, it was, um, an amazing situation because Hammond has beautiful people. People of multiple cultures, but history is about the people. And I just couldn't quite understand the object. Okay, that's nineteen ninety-seven, here we are at twenty twenty-three. I'm still not clear about what the vision of the historical district is. Okay? I have seen murals of the Danton Grocery family being destroyed. I just don't understand what they view as being historical. And, uh, you know, I don't think that they're willing to work with people. It has not been my experience. You know, I have been referred to as a steward. Oh yeah, I'm a steward, but guess what? God owns my dirt. God don't like ugly. And I just don't understand what their mission is, what their vision is. In thirty years, I would think that they would come up with some sort of a master plan or ideas, you know? Acknowledging the people of Hammond. Those people who have the fortitude and guts to make Hammond what it is today. You know, acknowledge the contributions of the black community with their museum. How wonderful that is. Acknowledging a family, an Indian family who have the guts to bring to Hammond their culture. The old Holiday Inn. I just don't really quite understand what their vision is. Because in thirty years, I haven't seen their vision. I have not seen it. So that's really all I had to say.
Um, I wanted to ask you, uh, your, your property right now, if the change is made, does that put yours in it? Or are you out of it, in it? Well, what's your property right now? How's it affect you by this?
How's it affect me? It's my home.
No, no, I'm saying the change affects you or it doesn't affect you, as in you're not in the historic district right now, right?
When you, when you, last time I came into this chamber, I was curious. I wanted to know what the vision was, and I met with a Ms. Nowers. I don't know where she is today, but other than being presented with rules and regulations and stating you will comply, you don't own your property, you are a steward. Well, you know what, got to tell you, wish Sheriff Edwards understood that. I pay those taxes, I pay that insurance, but more importantly, I don't understand why the people, the Danton, the mural, why aren't they not acknowledged for their contributions? Why isn't Delmas Dunn acknowledged for his work as a courier for the Black Museum? I don't understand the motivation of what is historical. It's people, it's not the dirt, the building, you know? It's the people, and I don't understand that. I don't understand what their vision is. In thirty years, I would think that the quote-unquote historical district would have a vision, a plan, and really and truthfully have the guts to live in that historical district. Have the guts to walk around, visit with the people, and discuss, what is your vision? What do you want for Hammond? You know, I just, I don't know, I find it extremely disappointing.
I guess what I was trying to ask is, right now, do you, are you in the historic district, we're regulated by the historic district?
Face it.
You face it right now?
Yeah.
So you have any regulations that affect you currently?
Oh, they expect me to comply.
Okay, all right, that, that's what I'm trying to figure out, yeah.
I don't, the dog in hunting.
Okay.
The dog is not going to hunt.
Okay.
Okay, because all I want is quiet enjoyment of my home. Because in the great scheme of kings, I've been called, uh, steward, oh yeah. Because guess what? The good Lord owns my dirt, and God don't like ugly. Okay? And if you people on this historical district, I don't even know who you are. Where's the board?
Someone's over there.
Someone over there.
Okay. What are your plans? What is your vision?
I, I would like to respond.
Oh, please, do.
Hi, Jessica Shirey, um, two oh two Holly Drive. Okay, so, Ms. Mashburn, I just wanted to clarify that the historic district, it deals with properties. It doesn't deal with people so much, like when you brought up about cultures and including people. We, we have a district, and it just, is, is, we just deal with properties and changes to properties. So, and we're appointed commissioners, so, through the, for the city. So it's not like we have projects where we can raise money to do certain things like that. We do work hand in hand some with the DDD on some projects, which we are currently working on, that are very inclusive of the whole community. So I just wanted to clarify that, um, uh, that, I, so I don't, I didn't want that to go in that direction. So we're just talking about properties themselves, and they got, and, and things have changed since nineteen ninety-seven, maybe whenever you had last communicated with, uh, the district. So, um, and I understand, we'd have had a change in coord, in, in the coordinator, and I'm sorry that you had a, a poor experience maybe prior. Um, but I would encourage you to come to our meetings, and then that way you can learn a lot more about what we're doing um, and, and why we're doing it.
Hello, do you know what Miss Shirey respected as a statement? Does anyone sound fond of this historic district? Does anyone may attempt to come by my house, my property and say, hey, you got burned out of your house? Your business? What do you need? Can we help you?
That, that's not part of what we do, that's not, that's not part of what happens.
Do we respect? Get your foot off my foot, okay? Just leave me alone, okay? I would guess what, would it all have to go? If I look and see what has been done in the program of this historic district since its inception, like thirty years ago, I would say that my home is deteriorated. Maybe we'll probably end up paying for parking lot.
All right, thank you.
Well, I'm gonna say this here for the record, and everybody know, because of you, Ms. Mashburn, that's why I just been put off. I heard what you said, and so whether they met with you or you met with them, look like we had two years in between to meet with one another. And I say this here out of respect for my elders, black or white or any color, I'm gonna always listen to elder person, because they been around, they done saw the thing. So for two years, it was up to you all to meet, and that's why this meeting been put off so long, the notice, everything they did, we had asked for it. And so, and I wouldn't dare say I would go against what they done just did, because they done done all this here. And for two years, you all had opportunity to meet. I don't know who a part of the group or nothing else. I just remember the gentleman in the orange shirt coming up here, and that's all I could say, so. And that's with anything, lack of communication can destroy anything. And where she stayed, where her business at, uh, I have a lot of respect, because I worked there when I was young. Yes, ma'am. Your B has stung me too now, so don't, don't keep talking, so I didn't know nothing about lawsuits back then, without learning now. And, and I'm saying that out of respect for you, that's why it was put off. We didn't vote on it that night. So, where y'all missed it, where y'all didn't hit, and this for anybody, anybody, anything. Communication, got to be with everybody. When something come up, and you gonna hear me say it, just in case you never come to a meeting again, when it's about District Street, I asked Ms. Lacy, you know, to send me an email, let me know. Because I don't know nothing to pop up in the community. And they say, "You the city councilman, you didn't say nothing." I didn't know nothing about it. But now, the communication is there. So, from apartment to duplex to a house, anything going on that is not supposed to be in the community, I go to the community and I ask them, "Do you want this?" Because I don't want you coming three years later, holler, "Well, you ain't give us the say-so." So, communication was lacking on y'all part, you know? So, that's what I had to say about this. So, but a lot of respect for you, Ms. Mashburn, I have.
Well, I respect you as well, Mr. Wells, but I will say this. I got a certified letter, dated June twenty. I was fine to that certified letter, and I am here. Prior to that, I was never given any certificated mail or anything. And believe me, I have not embraced technology. I don't wear plugs in my ears, and I don't talk to my wife. What can I say? I am being taken away. I'm sorry, I'm not gonna apologize. You know, and I respect what they've done, but I also wish that there was some sort of plan or vision for this Historical District.
So, in two years, y'all never communicated with, since that last meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
I got a certified letter, I should respond to.
I just want to say that I'm getting ready to celebrate my first year here with the city in my position. I've taken a little bit of a different approach than Ms. Nower did. I like to go out into the community and meet with our property owners that are within our district. I'm very disappointed to hear that I was unaware of your situation, Ms. Mashburn. No, and I just want, all I want to let you know is that my approach is a very personal one. And I have told everybody that my door is open. I have given everybody my cell phone number. And, I mean, I would love the opportunity to sit down with you and answer any of the questions that you have about what our vision is, where we want to go, what our plan is, what we actually do. And so, if you'd like to talk after the meeting, I would love to give you my information, so that we could... Okay, that sounds good, thank you.
Alright. Pleasure, the council.
I don't mean to make you, you know, a little bit upset, but you know what Ms. Mashburn was saying? You know, a lot of people in Hammond, Louisiana, not from Hammond, Louisiana, they didn't grow up here, but I did. And I used to work for Ms. Mashburn, not her, her mother. The problem I'm seeing now, I talked to this young lady just briefly, and yes, she's only been here one year. And she does have a lot that she's planning on doing, but prior to this, which has been the biggest problem, is that they don't inform the public. And it ain't just because of the Historic District. If you look around, and you check in this audience tonight, how many people you see from Hammond, Louisiana? That was here in the fifty, sixty, seventies, and eighties, or nineties, okay? So, I really feel sorry for her too, I really do. Because this young lady, her family taught us a lot. But this town, this city of Hammond, is being ran by people who have no idea what Hammond, Louisiana is supposed to be about. Not what you want it to be, but what the people want it to be. Including council before y'all, and the council before them. So, it's time for the, not only Historic District, I had a man, he called me four, five months ago. "I can't even get an awning, it's gonna take me eight months to get an awning up." Now, is that pathetic? Eight months to get an awning up? Because Historic District would not give them the okay? But she had nothing to do with it. So, what I'm saying, you know, I see that, you know, the council sometime is not informed. And they council is not informed a lot of times about different things. So, what I'm asking y'all, as the council people, with the mayor, I think y'all need to sit down as a one team. And if y'all don't feel that way, unfortunately, in four more years, y'all gonna be gone anyway. But, so will the mayor, so will the council. But guess what? I will remember. And I'll be here, if the Lord spares. But think about what I'm saying, okay? And I can see the mayor, he's really a little bit dumbfounded by what I'm saying, probably. But, that's okay, I'm gonna address this to the president right now, okay? And we have a couple other things that hadn't been brought up, but they will be pretty soon. So, think about it, the president of the council, what Ms. Mashburn was asking. Communication.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pleasure, the council.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Final adoption, number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance to increase the monthly garbage fee from fourteen oh eight to twenty ninety-eight, Lacey Landry.
Last year, we approved a contract for a change in price on the garbage. Waste Pro is our provider and has been our provider since last fall. What we are here to discuss tonight is whether the city continues to subsidize that cost, or whether that cost is passed on to the customers. There are four options before the council. Per your request, we did get the cost of having only once a week garbage collection. So, there's four options. The first option that is up on the screen, that I will make bigger when I sit back down, is to have twice a week garbage collection, and to continue the recycling, which is on the first and third Saturdays, where people bring in and drop off their recyclables at the one ninety maintenance facility. The total cost increase is six dollars and ninety cents, if we go with that option. Option number two is to continue twice a week garbage collection, but to discontinue the recycling altogether. So, there would be no recycling collection within the city. That option is a total increase of six dollars and forty cents. Option three is to go to once a week garbage collection, and to continue the recycling at the one ninety facility. That cost increase would be a three dollar and thirty-one cent increase. The fourth option is to go to once a week garbage collection, and to have no recycling within the city limits. That would be a two dollars and eighty-one cent increase. Waste Pro is here to answer any questions. We have several representatives, or if there are other questions that the council has.
Anyone from Waste Pro, like to come up at this moment?
Hi. Jolene Johnson, two fifty-one, we're drive over in Covington, is our office that we facilitate and service the city out of.
You have anything additional?
Somebody else came up with me. No, I just want, if you had any questions about going to once a week, then I might be able to...
I have a question for that. Just put it out there now, I'm against once a week, for lots of reasons. But one of the things is, when we got the proposal for once a week, and the price is less, it said something about being able to, a household could get a second can for an amount, I think it was eight ninety-five. And I had responded when we got that with a question of, "Right now, you guys will pick up pretty much anything that's out there, in any other cans. It's not limited to just one Waste Pro can." So, if we were go to once a week, and then say, "My family needs two cans, so I pay for two cans," are you guys still gonna pick up anything that anyone else sits out? And if so, then why on earth would I pay for an extra can? That, I'm very confused on the option of an extra can.
Okay, we do pick up stuff that's outside of the container, but that's usually not household garbage. Household garbage is in the can, and we do pick up the smaller cans if you have your senior citizens, or people that are disabled, that cannot wield the ninety-five gallon cart. So, we do, we put stickers on those smaller cans, and so that we allow them to do that. But we prefer the garbage to be in the Waste Pro garbage cart. At my home, sometimes when I pick up sticks, I will put them in a circle, you know, a circle garbage can, and set it out at the curb, that way it's not sitting in the grass. That way, they can just dump it that way. So, that's easier than trying to pick it up by hand, or with a fork, you know, with a rake. So, I'm not saying that we won't, because we will, for the stuff that's outside the cart. But the household garbage is typically required to be in the cart that we can dump with the ASL line.
And then, my other question about the once a week garbage, is this factoring into downtown as well? We have restaurants, and coffee shops, and retail stores, and everybody who, they utilize the twice a week currently. So, if the city were to move to a once a week option, is that also downtown is gonna be once a week, where garbage is gonna sit and collect fully for a week?
For those businesses that have food, that's what you're talking about mainly, correct? I'm sure that we can work something out with that, if they needed an addition, you know, addition...
But an additional fee, though.
It may remain the same for them, for the twice a week.
That's getting close.
But we weren't asked to put that in the proposal?
No, I know it's not.
So, that's something that can be worked out.
Yeah, I'm raising issues of once a week, because right now, I have residents, and part of my district's in downtown, who say, "We need three times a week pickup downtown," because it is just outrageous how much garbage is collected on the streets downtown. Right, so.
Most of my residents, most of my residents want to continue with it twice a week. So, you know, my question would be, it seems like it takes a full day to pick up the garbage twice a week. So, you're gonna be picking up the same amount of garbage, but you're only gonna be doing it once a week. So, how is that gonna compensate? In other words, how are you gonna double, how are you gonna put two days into one? Because that's basically what you could be doing.
Yeah, but we're not running twice the routes. Because you're running every street twice. That's how you can accomplish that. Because we will have to change the days on some people's collection. So, you know, Monday, Thursday, Thursday pickup would be another created route. And Friday pickup would be another created route, out of part of Monday or part of Tuesday. So, those would be split, and then it would be out over the four days.
But your trips to the landfill are gonna remain the same?
Well, it just all depends. Corey would be the expert on it.
I mean, you know, if you got X amount of garbage per week, whether you pick it up five times or one time, you still got X amount of garbage.
Absolutely, it's the same service, we're still collecting the same amount, it's just only one time.
One time a week. So, is that more frequent trips to the landfill? And is it, well, is it more frequent trips to the landfill? And how is that gonna, how's that gonna work? I mean, I'm just curious.
No, that's a good question. So, number one, I guess...
Come up to the mic, please.
Number one, obviously, two-fifths of your residents would remain on Monday and Tuesday. The three-fifths would go to Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. It's just naturally how it would go. We try to keep the routes as, you know, balanced as we could, so we didn't have to make that extra trip. Now, each truck's gonna hold about eleven or twelve tons each run. The volume's not gonna change, as you said, per week. So, yes, it would be more probably per day, back and forth. But granted, it's not gonna be enough, because they're dumping twice anyway. So, usually, like, right now, on Monday and Tuesday, your heavier days, it's two full loads. On Thursday and Friday, you're about a load and a quarter to a load and a half, because your volume is lower on Thursday and Friday. Does that make sense?
And what's gonna happen with, what's gonna happen with holidays? I mean, you know, day after Christmas, you know, the Thanksgiving. During those periods of time, how's that gonna work?
No, you're absolutely right, long days, you know, it's gonna be a lot. I would more than likely have to run more trucks on holidays, realistically, to be able to get the trash up. And, you know, I'll get it, it's whatever you guys decide, so.
Usually, it gets pushed back, I'm sorry. Like, if Christmas were on Wednesday, then Wednesdays would be picked up, Thursday, Thursday's on Friday, Friday on Saturday. So, we don't skip a day, it doesn't, it just is a day later for the remainder of that week.
My question was more about volume. You're gonna have twice the volume for two days a week, and now we're gonna have four times the volume for one day a week.
It's gonna be an adjustment, or else, probably not be able to adjust.
Yeah, it's a cultural change, it is. And I can speak from, because I did it. Not by my choice, it was that what my municipality chose, was to go from twice a week to once a week. And we actually got a higher rate per month and less service. So, but it was, it was an adjustment, and it worked. I know it worked, because I do it. But I'm just saying that there was, there were a lot of people that didn't like it initially. And you, they can't even remember why they like twice a week now, mainly. But I'm not saying that that's everybody's, because you also have a lot of communities that that's just the way it's been, and that's the way it's gonna stay. So, we're here to do it however y'all want to do it, and we were asked to give a proposal for that, to possibly save you some money.
I guess my question was really more sort of on the recycling part of it. Doesn't the parish, don't they have a setup? Parish has recycling, correct? Over there on landfill? So, you can recycle?
You can go to Independence.
Independence? There's not one on anywhere in the Hammond area, like West Pleasant Ridge or anything like that? Okay.
No, they used to have that location, but they discontinued that. Everything is collected at the landfill, which I know sounds bizarre, but that's a one-stop shop for them.
So, you can recycle, you would just have to bring it to landfill, and that's already included? And the parish provides it for everyone, in the parish? So, yeah, that's what I, I was just checking, I know we pay for, you know, fifty cents, but if we already have the option to recycle, that's included in the parish, it's not like we don't have the option to recycle. It's just you would have to go to Amet, or Independence, yeah, instead of right here, which, I don't, you know, I don't know if they could, I don't know if the parish could centralize something at some point in time, if all the parish uses recycling, kind of put it somewhere center of the parish. I mean, I think that would probably be a little more of a, since there's not everybody recycling, and, you know, and some things are taken to dump anyway that we're paying for, I think it would be more sensible for the entire parish to figure something out with, everybody in the parish can centrally locate somewhere. Since we're already, it's already, not a free service, but the parish already offers it if you want to recycle, so.
So, Ms. Lacey, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask again, pretty much the same question. So, the parish do not do the recycling on Pleasant Ridge Road anymore?
Correct. They only do collection at the landfill, is what we have been told. So, they used to do it at Pleasant Ridge, because what we used to coordinate was that we would do it on the first and third, and they would do it on the second and fourth. And that's how we tried to coordinate those dates. Everything is, my understanding, is going to Independence now at the landfill. It's not getting thrown away, it's getting recycled, but that's where their collection point is.
Okay, yeah, because I think Sam been reading my notes, because that's one of the things I was concerned about. The parish used to do it on Pleasant Ridge Road. And so, you saying they don't do that anymore, the recycling? Alright, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
I want to go back to another question, because I'm still not clear on it. So, if we went to once a week pickup, so, you have your one initial can. If you need more than that one initial can, then you're gonna pay an extra fee for how many cans, or how many bags, or how many pieces of trash, or whatever. I'm just not clear on that.
A lot of times, people want to put their household garbage in the cart. That's what we require, your household garbage go in the cart.
Correct.
The other stuff, we're still gonna pick up. We're not losing any services. But if somebody wants an extra cart, because they, I'll give you... But if somebody wants an extra cart because they, I'll give you, I put a cart liner in mine so that way I can tie the whole thing. All my garbage goes into there. But if it stinks, I want another one to put, I want to tie that one up. And then if I've got another one because it only comes once a week, then I've got the option of doing that. Because you're going to have some people that, that say, well, I have to have another one because our family's so large. Okay, well, there's an option for you, but it usually works. It usually works that you don't have to get that other.
So, your other stuff is a chair, limbs that are cut in six foot pieces?
Bulky items that wouldn't go in a cart. But like I said, I have a round brute garbage can that I'll put my limbs in when I, when I put them out on the curb myself. So, that way, they can just toss it in the truck, put my cart can back there. So, we'll still pick that, that part up, but that's why you were asking about that.
But, you know, yesterday, I drove around, there's garbage, everybody's got their garbage by the curb. Lots of people have their household garbage in more than one cart. They're more than, it's more than one Waste Pro cart. You guys are picking it up, it's great, people are happy about it. So, the idea of getting us paying for a second cart doesn't make any sense to me because you're already picking up whatever y'all, we put out, right? And getting this notice saying, you can, if you need more than one cart, we'll give you one more for eight seventy-five a month. Great, thank you for the service, but does that mean that we're going to stop doing what you're already doing and now we're only doing it from the Waste Pro carts?
No, we're not going to stop what we're doing, it's just an option. If somebody said they needed another cart because they couldn't stand going to once-a-week instead of twice-a-week, I'm going to have to have two carts. That's what, so we gave you that option to put on there.
Contract has a certain amount of kilograms around the cart anyway.
Right.
Standard residential contracts, that's what yours does.
Just so everybody knows, I did pull up on the Tangipoh Parish website. So, it gives the hours of the recycling and that it's at the, at the landfill in Independence. So, it's Monday through Friday, seven AM to four forty-five, and then on Saturdays from seven to noon.
That's some good hours.
People want to talk?
All right. Public?
Just like I said, we're here to do whatever the council and the community wishes, so we just wanted you to have the options.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Appreciate it.
Also, I'll note that I didn't think there was enough conversation about this because in our last meeting, we came up with the, or two meetings ago, came up with the idea of once-a-week garbage. And so, I put a bunch of stuff on Facebook and shared some things, and I've had just hundreds of messages. And it's majority, I even did a poll on one of the pages I was able to do, you know, majority wants twice a week. So, I just wanted to state that so people know. You can check the Facebook if you're interested, but love to hear what people have to say.
Seven oh three MC Moore Road, Chris Ruffin. I'll tell you this, I don't think we should pay for the recycling at all because they're just going straight to the trash. Ninety percent of the people don't really know how to recycle anyway because if you have anything on it, on plastic or glass, they just throw it away. So, we don't need that. And about the trash cans, if you don't want an extra, they sell trash cans at Walmart. If I go buy me one for like twenty dollars, well, they dumped out. That's what I want, you know?
Yes, they will. They would dump any can that you have.
Sal Nicolosi. I think I'd like to see if we could table this again because I think people are still mixed up. I talked to one or two of the people, and so far, I haven't been able to get a good answer. The answer that I got was, yeah, we voted for this, but I don't understand. The people on the council were supposed to have voted for it, but I think it was more in a, in a fashion where this thing was just thrown up on the council, from what I'm aware, is that correct? Y'all the council, anybody answer that?
Yeah, I can, it was thrown up on us.
I'm sorry?
Yes, it was thrown up on us, yeah.
Well, what I'm concerned with, and basically, I'm on a limited income. Maybe y'all not. But I'm eighty years old and I'm on a limited income. That eight dollars a month means a lot to me. I had a couple of people here the last time that they agreed upon the same thing. So, I'm going to address this to the president because they said I shouldn't address it to nobody else. But, you know, sometimes you got to look at other people at times, you know? And we are not in position to pay that eight dollars a month. So, I would suggest that the council would go back and do a more, a little bit more research on this. I mean, I would hope the council would think about the citizens of Hammond. Now, besides that, since it was just thrown upon y'all, I think y'all had the option to maybe, you know, put this on the back burner. I don't know if I'm correct, Mr. President?
That's why we moved it forward to where we are right now.
Okay.
From the last meeting that we had, we asked for other options to be brought before us. And these other options that were brought before us.
Okay, and those options are four, right?
Yeah, four options.
Okay. I guess I'm a little bit older than y'all, so I don't really hear as well. But I think the last option was to stay the same without any more income? Or is that correct, the fourth one? What is the fourth one, Lacy?
It's right there on the screen.
Well, I cannot see it, that's why I'm asking.
So, the fourth one was once-a-week collection. So, one time a week collection of garbage and no recycling inside Hammond. And that's a two dollars and eighty-one cent increase.
So, why should we, why do we really need recycling? All we need is garbage pickup, from what I'm aware. And this, you know, the parish, you can bring all your stuff to the parish for recycling. So, why, why do we have to bring that up?
That's an option on there, but that's only about a fifty cents savings. If we do away with the recycling, we'll do away with collecting over here at the facility on one ninety. It's saved about fifty cents. You still can bring it to the parish, so that would, that would justify that. I think a lot of people in my district, they do want to keep it, the two pickups a week. Currently, right now, we've been with this company for middle part of the year, I think now or so. And, you know, the city, you know, taxpayer's been paying the bill right now, I guess, and keeping the bill the same as the current field, fourteen dollars, I think it is, twelve, twelve fifty, fourteen oh eight.
Fourteen oh eight, yeah.
So, fourteen oh eight, so, so, yeah, so, I mean, you got an option to keep it the same way it is and, you know, twice a week, no recycling or recycling and continue, you know.
Let the city continue paying for it. Why can't the city continue paying for it? I mean, we pay property tax. I pay property tax to the city and the parish. And I don't have a one garbage that I really need picked up. I'm not as, I guess, I don't eat as much as most of the other people. I see Steve eats a lot, the way, you know, it's kind of, kind of, maybe look at me, I'm not, I don't know whether it's making any sense, Steve, to you? I mean, I had asked you a question earlier, and I didn't get the answer I expected. Would you mind answering?
What's that?
I had asked you previously about this bill, or this, this was supposed to be, it was, you said it was a year ago. But you said y'all voted on it, but y'all voted on it without even being notified about this. Is that correct, Steve?
No, I think we knew, I think we knew about it, we came here and.
I don't think so.
You think, you think what you need to think.
Well, I know I am. Well, let me ask you a question.
Right here, Sal.
I'm sorry.
Right here.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Yes, I'm kind of concerned because from what I'm aware of, this is from people that live in Hammond. And they telling me that, you know, that this was presented with no option, either you take it or leave. Now, I had a, Mr. Greggo came here, he asked me to talk for him since he couldn't come tonight, but I don't like to talk for nobody.
All right, well, that's good. Well, let me say this, it was presented to us, the item was never voted on.
I'm sorry?
The item was never voted on when it was presented to us. Tabled. It was brought back up. We had discussion on it. At that discussion, we asked for other options to be brought to us. That's what we're dealing with tonight.
Okay.
The other option.
Yeah, that's what I want, that's why, I'm glad you cleared this.
That's what we're dealing with tonight.
Okay, so, what I'm asking is, so are we going to stay with the same program? Or, you know, with one of these, which four, which four do we feel is going to be best suit for the citizens of Hammond? Which four of the options?
Well, when we get to the vote, you will see. But we have the option of having other people to speak before we get to the vote.
Okay, good, thank you.
Ms. Jean?
Good evening. I'm Jean Voorhees, twelve oh one South Holly Street in Hammond. I would like to speak for the underdogs. Normally, my heart is with the poor. I worked thirty years at the Youth Service Bureau and, you know, we have so many poor in our community. And I try to be very, very conscious of the tight, tight funds that so many people live on. But I'd like to speak on behalf of the recycling program. It is a little tiny thing, and I think it's really almost a straw man to be dealing with that. The problem is not fifty cents a month. The problem is six dollars a month. I don't, you can't get a candy bar for fifty cents. Fifty cents is no money. People that don't have any money have fifty cents to give to a kid to get, you know, I think now you can get a gumball with it. There are those of us in this town who feel strongly about recycling. You know, it's not, and I sent you all an email. Recycling is not going to save the world, it's not going to get all the plastic out of the air and the water, it's not going to stop war, it's not going to do any big things, but it's a little thing we can do. Fifty silly cents a month. And there are those of us who feel strongly enough about it that when I finish a cup of something, I look on the bottom and I check the number. If it's a one or a two, I take it and I rinse it, I rip off the label, I put it in my recycling tub. And I do that with everything that I eat, all the cardboard boxes. You know, it's a real investment on my part, and people that feel like I do, we really, we feel deeply about it, deeply enough to really inconvenience ourselves. And then I take these big old bags, I'm eighty-one years old, I haul them, big old plastic bags, and I throw them in the back of my van, and I get up early enough to get down to the maintenance facility before twelve o'clock. And, and so, they'll take them out. And I know recycling is complicated, there is not a perfect program. A lot of the stuff does not get recycled. Some people don't check their numbers and they put stuff in that that they shouldn't. I'm aware of all that, but some good comes of it. And I feel strong enough that that little bit of good is worth my time. And it's fifty friggin' cents, fifty cents a month. The problem is six dollars and something a month. The problem is not the fifty cents. If you give somebody that either one or two times a week, that, that increase with the fifty cents or without the fifty cents, they're not even going to hear it. It is not real money. So, I hope that you will take seriously. And they said in the Daily Star that there was something like a hundred and thirty-one cars that went through the recycling thing the last time I was there. And, but that, that car is for a family. And so, if you figure there are about four people in a family, that's about five hundred people a month that are recycling. And that's not nobody, that's not everybody, that's a small percentage of the population of Hammond, but it's not nobody.
Let me ask you something. Did you, did you know you could bring your cycling to the parish in Independence? Did you know that beforehand or no?
I didn't know that, but that really is kind of a bridge too far.
No, I was just saying, I wanted to make sure you knew that. I didn't know if you knew or not, I mean.
Well, it was in the paper.
Yeah. That, there is a service, not like you're not, it's not like you're going away with recycling completely. You know, you're just using the resources that you're technically paying for right now. And, you know, you're just paying a fifty cents extra to have a convenience of the one ninety, I guess, instead of bringing it.
It's a considerable convenience. It makes a difference, you know, driving to the one ninety facility or driving to Independence. I mean, that's, you know, I've already rinsed my containers, checked my numbers, put them in the tub, haul them down to, in the bags, you know. I don't think it's unreasonable for fifty cents a month for people to be able to go to the maintenance facility. I think it is a small thing. When you consider how much money we spend on all the different services and how much our water bill is, fifty cents is a small thing. And for those of us who feel passionately about this, it's important, and I hope you all will take it seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Council, I'm Michelle Kendall, five zero six East Mary Avenue. I just wanted to say in support for our two-day pickup to continue, I had a few business owners reach out. And quite frankly, I would be a bit concerned about keeping our beautiful and walkable downtown smelling nice and being the high-quality downtown that we have if our trash for some of our businesses and our residents have to sit there for, you know, longer than we'd like. So, just wanted to express that also as a resident of the Iowa addition. You know, the two-day pickup, I think most of my neighbors, we also talked about it. We would support, I understand that it's been subsidized over time, but we would support paying for the additional two-day, well, the increase for the two-day pickup to maintain that.
Anyone else from the public? Well, I have to state that I've received calls from my constituents as well in reference to the situation here at hand with the, with the garbage. A lot of my constituents are looking at option three, continuing to keep the recyclables and the one-day pickup. So, that's what I have to be in favor of.
Anybody else, anybody else in here that has anything to say about the garbage? Come on up.
Rodney Mallory, two thirteen East Danden Street. The recycling center, you asked her about the recycling center in Independence. Eighty years old. Apparently, you'd never had the Sunday morning, get up with grandma and take her to the recycling center so she can get out the house for the weekend. This is what they normally use the recycling center for. When you go to a recycling center on these days, there are elderly people. This is what they do. Take that from them. I mean, as you said, fifty cent.
The reason why I asked that question, I don't know if you may not have heard it back there, you may not have heard it or not. The question was asked, did she know that there was actually services available at the parish that you could return it? That's my question because she may or not even know. What she answered, she said, no, she did not know that until it was in the paper. So, that was the question I was asking to make sure, because a lot of people did not even know. They just thought if you do away with one ninety, then they would have no recycling. So, that was the question referred to, not her age, not her, not her physical health or anything.
Even though she did know and that she did not know, you know, she's a Hammond resident. We're talking about Independence. You know, that, that question just, it didn't fit that person. Yes, I knew because I use it. I go to Independence, I'm a well-able body.
That's good.
Elderly, you understand? So.
I understand. I don't think you understood the question. You misunderstood because the question was, I wanted to make sure she was aware because a lot of people didn't. And she answered my question. The question was, she did not know about it. So, that was what, not about her parents, not about her age, nothing. So, that's what it was.
Understood.
And so, that was, that was where it was. You knew about it, but she didn't know about it. But I appreciate your comment, I do.
But what I'm saying is to get rid of it, you know.
I didn't say I was for getting rid of it, I asked the question, that's it.
On here, on your four list, one of your, one of your, two of your options is to get rid of it.
Yeah, there's options, yeah.
That's the option. But considering that option, you also have to consider what's the purpose of that day. I'm just letting you know as a, a person of the community, this is what we use that day for. We use it to help our elderly, you understand? We use that day to kind of, it's more of a community-based type deal. So, the, we are just saying, keep that in mind before you say no on getting rid of it. That's all I'm just trying to say.
Nobody said no, there are options, and we're all reviewing it, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just make one, one more point on the two-day, on the two-day-a-week pickup. You know, in South Louisiana, we love our seafood. And I want you all to think about during crawfish season. And I want you all to think about during crawfish season, when you boil that hundred pounds of crawfish and put it out on the curb and it sits there for six days, what's it gonna smell like? And when you eat your boiled shrimp and you eat your boiled crabs and you do all the wonderful things that we do in South Louisiana and we put it out there for six days in the sun, what are we going to look like? Please consider that. Point on recycling. As a nation, we have talked about recycling. We have brought up our children in recent times, teaching them how to recycle, the importance of recycling. We've spent a lot of, we've spent a lot of time, money, and effort in all of our schools, public and private, on recycling. I think it sends an awful bad message as a city that we want to do away with a program that all of these educators and all of these teachers are trying to teach our children to change this world and make it a better place. We need to set the example. We need to be the example for fifty cents a month. Wow. That's all I got.
Anybody else have anything to say in the audience about the garbage?
Ronald Dishla, live over in Bridle Path in Forbes Forum. As far as the two times, let me back up. As far as the obligation to pick up the trash within the city and then outside of the city in the residential areas, is there an option that's been placed in front of you to do a dual or two-day-a-week for the Central Business District and a one-time pickup for the outs portions of the subdivisions, et cetera, outside of the city limits? Or outside of the Central Business District, which has most of the commercial?
It wasn't presented to us, any of our options. No, sir.
That's, that's what they just said, that they can put together something for us, for our downtown core area. But we did not, we did not seek that option.
No, that would probably complicate the collection overall. But again, for the residences that are, you know, some of the people here, they're talking about one time would be plenty for them. So I thought maybe that would be a separation there of a central area for a double pickup and then a single day-a-week for the outskirts. And it may be able to adjust pricing to that point where we can keep the recycling in that at one time.
And downtown too, sir, they also have dumpsters that the city is actually paying for. My knowledge, because I never did get the information of who actually paying for the dumpsters. So the cities downtown do have dumpsters. So I don't even understand why garbage trucks run downtown. I see the garbage truck on the one-way, but in the alleys, they also have dumpsters also that I think is being picked up four times a week, Ms. Lacy?
It depends on the dumpster location.
Okay, so the downtown is pretty much covered. I think right now, the resident, and I agree with President Kip, in District Three, once a week, majority can use once a week. In my household, I can use once a week. I don't need twice a week. But as a city whole, and I don't think it's broke down like that that this district can get once a week and that district. So that's the issue we're up against. We have four options to pick from. We're talking about the recycle. Could one of you all representing the company can come explain the recycle and the process? And what recycle go to and how much is being recycled?
Oh, I don't have any of those numbers. I don't know.
I've asked about that for several months now, about the percentage. Remember, Carlos, you brought up a while back when originally in the contract, said something about ninety percent, eighty percent of it goes, that we paid for, goes to the dump anyway, the recycling that we're paying for. And that was one of the main, that was one of the main factors that I had an issue with, with paying twice for the same service, all going to the dumpster anyway and not being recycled. Why pay for that? And we went with the rollaway on one ninety because, you know, that was kind of what, what happened there to where, you know, you can still bring it, but.
I understand nationwide, recycling programs, they're not perfect. There's no perfect science to recycling. And so many loads get contaminated. That's something that just unfortunately, everybody can control all the time. And when there's a contaminated load.
Say it on the mic, please.
When there's a contaminated load and we bring it to a recycling facility, it's up to them whether to accept it or deny it. Once they deny it, their trash has gotta go somewhere, you know. So to say that there's a perfect science to the percentage that does actually get recycled, it'd be difficult to pinpoint that. But we have, per the contract, pursuant to the contract, done what we've had to do in terms of bringing to, bringing to recycling facility. And Corey, and what we just learned about that too, that there's another option of that.
Yeah, so the Stranko Transfer Station does recycle, particularly on Wednesdays. Stranko in Covington. Yep. So we're going to start taking it on Wednesdays to Stranko and they will be accepting it. Our other facilities, we have been taking it to, as Carlos referenced, a lot of that stuff was contaminated at their facility. So we did some research and we found that Stranko does take a lot of the materials that you had been recycling. Now, that's not to say that it wouldn't be beneficial, in my opinion, to educate your citizens on what can go into the recycle box, because it still matters at the end of the day for whenever they go and sort it at Stranko. So we are kind of footing that right now on our end.
Is it, is it true that when we do the recycling at the one ninety, it's, it's better than having it curbside? Because at curbside, people just throw whatever they want in there. They don't care what the rules and regulations are. But at one ninety, they're actually collecting things that can be recycled. So there's probably a lot less waste, I would imagine. And those things work rather well, as it's a good way to do recycling if your city wants recycling. Also, so recycling, the fifty cents is what we would add to the bill, which has to do with the city's cost of running the facility and whatnot. But the cost broken down is really more like twenty-seven cents. I would love to see if we could get with the parish and do some cost sharing and do, and do something where we can, Carlos's eyes get big there. I just mean somehow the city and the parish, maybe we can work together to have a Hammond spot. I don't want to see recycling go until we know that that can be done. But that seems like a really good way to solve a problem of, they have the north end of the parish with Independence. What can we do to work with the parish to have Hammond have recycling and maybe do some cost sharing? Like, I think that would be a good conversation to have. And really, our cost is twenty-seven cents per resident. So I would think we could cover that. If it's fifty cents is too much, why don't we just do twenty-seven cents and the city can pay their employees as they are?
I got a question for you too. Maybe, maybe I'm missing something. So to go from, to go from twice a week to once a week, we're gonna save around three dollars, right? Okay. But the initial amount, the initial amount that we paid before the increase, that stays the same, yet we're going down to once, yet we're going down to half the service. So the only, the only thing we dividing in half is the increase, but we leaving, but we leaving the principal alone. So I don't understand that.
I think y'all had mentioned before, at least maybe Jesse had talked about, that you had to cover the cost of your equipment. They have to cover the cost of the carts. They have to cover the cost of the new trucks that were purchased to service our route.
You don't split all your capital in half, just because you're only doing half of the week, because you still have to cover all the same roads. And so it takes more trucks than just the trucks, more than half the trucks doing twice.
Right.
Yeah.
I understand, I understand.
It's generally, when we, when we make proposals, it's generally between twenty and, well, between eighteen and twenty-five percent difference from between twice a week to once a week, generally speaking.
So what we need to, what we need to understand is, for three dollars and fifty-nine cents, we can get twice the service. Yeah. Because that's twice a week instead of once a week. So for three dollars and fifty-nine cents, we can get twice the service. Now, if you don't think that's a good, if anybody doesn't think that's a good deal, well.
We don't understand.
Okay, yeah. You know, gotta, gotta look at who's coming out ahead here. All right.
Anybody else?
I'm sorry. I know, is somebody else want to come up?
Let me ask a question.
Yes.
Are you gonna say the same thing again?
No, I'm just gonna ask one question.
Okay.
I'd like to propose that we look at option four for the council. That's what I'd like to know. Okay? All right, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion. You said, you said it, Carly, so I'll make the motion now, okay? You're the one said it, young lady.
I wanted to add, so, so do we have, do we have a motion on the table right now?
No, we don't.
Okay, I remember you made a comment or something earlier.
Me? No, I was just making a statement, like many of us do sometime on where we're standing and why we're standing, where we're standing.
Well, these are the four options represented right here. And, you know, I mean, my, you know, I like, you know, the old contract we had, that was, that's no longer here. And so, you know, my, my motion would be, my motion would be option one with, with an amendment stating that the current residents pay fourteen dollars, fourteen dollars eight cents as they're currently paying with no increase. That, that's my motion.
Wait.
My motion is option one, amending it. Can you, can you do it like that? I don't see why you put amend option one.
You're just saying no increase.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm doing option one, just like, just like we were with option one right now.
No, option one, as I'm understanding it, would be twice a week recycling. It's an increase of six dollars and ninety cents.
And I'm amending option one, stating just like we're doing right now, that it's being paid right now. The garbage being paid right now is being picked up twice a month and the residents are paying fourteen dollars and eight cents. So that's, that's what they're doing right now.
So the city continues to.
So I'm, I'm making a motion for option one, amending it, stating that the increase to the citizens do not go up.
So basically, your motion, if I'm understanding, your motion would be that there be no increase?
No increase. Motion amending no increase. The current rate stay the same. Pickup to be twice a week with the recycling feature of fifty cents. Yes.
I have a question about the motion, because we need clarification. So that would be an increase, that would be a cost of about half a million dollars to the city. And so your motion includes us covering the half a million dollars to the city. So subsidizing half a million dollars worth of garbage pickup.
Currently, we're subsidizing and it went in effect. When did y'all go in effect, Carlos?
It's about November.
So it's been, we've been paying for it since then. I'm not agreeing. I would have never, so let me clear that, yes, that question there is that I would have never terminated the old contract that was fourteen dollars and eight cents. I would have never terminated. I didn't. I didn't as a council member and none of the council that I'm aware of, you know, knew about it beforehand and it was presented to us. So the only reason we're dealing with this right now, because it was terminated prematurely and, and a lot of the residents in council wasn't included on it. It's, it's done. That's done. But that's not my problem. There's a lot of issues right now that they could have had done a little, the joint endeavor with the recycling, with the parish, that was brought up. There's a lot of factors that is there that could be negotiated and organized better, probably to save some money. That still hasn't been exercised yet. So therefore, I think there's a lot more homework that need to be done. So as of right now, I'm not ready, speaking for my district four, who doesn't want the increase to take in effect and they're, they don't want to lose their two pickups and they're currently paying it right now. The city's currently paying it, been paying it since November. It should have went up, we weren't proposed in November to go up when it went in effect. We're proposed now to go up, so.
Same point.
Yeah.
Carlos.
It's fine. October, November, whichever one.
Either way, it wasn't yesterday, was it?
No.
Okay, so it's been in effect since then. So we've been covering it. So I think, you know, that, that's, that's what I speak for, my council and my, I mean, for my district four and, and people I've talked to. And so that's, that's not my problem. I created. Because we would have had eighteen months left to figure out other solutions and whatnot or talked about it as a council, as a city, what we wanted to do. And something may have changed. We may have more options eighteen months. Who knows? At the end of the day, it's irrelevant, because we didn't have to be faced with that fact then. And now we're here with this problem. And it's not my problem. I created. And therefore, it's not my citizen, it's not the customer's problem that they created. So therefore, that's why I feel the way I feel. That's why I vote the way I support it or not support it. But that was my motion, going with option one. And then do some more homework, figure out, you know, what needs to happen. But that's, that's what, that's what I want to continue. That was my proposal, so.
Just to make it clear, it's not a vote on option one that's been presented. Your, your motion would be to have no cre, no increase in garbage collection fees and to keep the service as is.
Yes.
Okay.
That's my motion.
I'm gonna make a substitute motion to approve twice-a-week collection at recycle and with recycling at one ninety and to approve the increase of six dollars and ninety cents.
I'll second that.
So Andre, to get things clear.
Yes.
Sam just made a, a motion and amended option one.
Well, he's really not option one. Option one is what the motion that Councilwoman Gonzalez made, I believe. Option, what Councilman Victoria was interested in is having no increase and keep the same service as is, which would be the two times a week and the recycling. There was no second to that motion.
Well, it was, it was no second.
It was no second, because they kept talking.
Correct. So there was a substitute motion made that on the table now would be the, what is, what is, I believe, option one, which is the recycling two times a week with, excuse me, pickup twice a week with the recycling. And that's the increase of six dollars and ninety cents. And that, I think, is the option one.
That's correct.
That is on the, on, on the screen for the audience. So that's a motion on the table that has been seconded.
Okay, well, what about the first one?
Well, so has it been seconded? Hers has been seconded by who?
Councilman Lee.
Okay.
But hold up. Now, go back to Sam's. Sam had made a motion and amended, but they were still talking. Because I agree with Sam. I'm not for no increase, so.
And your vote would be no for the, for the motion on the table.
Yeah, with Sam, right. I don't want to make no, I don't want to confuse nobody.
Correct. The motion is the substitute motion, which is option one, which increases the rate by six dollars and ninety cents twice a week and has the recycling option.
Okay. I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna second what Sam.
Well, you can't do that. Now, they gotta do a call, because what you were getting at is that they didn't give you time to second my motion and they substituted it. So that, that's what you were saying. So now.
Just vote no.
So now, now it'd be a vote of everybody up here. They could vote, you know, yes or no in favor of what, what Carly, you know, presented to us.
So Carly is for the increase?
That's the motion.
That's the motion?
Yes.
Now, I'm not for that. We, I'm not, no, I'm not for that at all. Yeah.
That's the motion on the table.
So, oh, one minute, one minute, Ms. Lisa. So why I wasn't given a chance to vote? I'm asking, because I'm saying, I didn't interrupt none of the council people, because I don't want nobody to interrupt me. So they was talking in the process when Sam made a motion, but I'm thinking they gonna answer the question, or Sam will be able to answer the question for. But I didn't have no idea that we're gonna do another motion. So I'm not for no increase. So when it's time to vote, now I'm gonna need you to explain it to me again, because I'm not for no increase.
And your vote would be no for when, when it comes time for you to vote?
Okay, but I want to make.
This motion is for an increase.
Okay. So we just bypassed what Sam had to say in so many words.
Well, maybe. It may come back up, depending upon how this vote goes.
Well, you can see, you can see right now, and even everybody in the audit, you can pretty much see what's going on, that here it's the third time this has come up and everybody's still confused, you know. Councilman Kip said his district would like one time, the majority, a pickup. I can sit here and say, my district would like one time pickup. If they had to keep it the same rate. Then what we looking at, because I know it gonna be a problem, who garbage they pick up one time a week and who garbage they pick up two times a week. So I think that gonna be a problem for the company itself. But we really have an issue here. issue here. Mr. Sam stated, and I don't know how much money he been getting all his life, but I know my community have never, never received a money that he been getting his life, so they definitely on the fixed comp, and we're a poor area, and we can't afford not even that fifty cent that used to be to get a candy bar with. We can't afford that fifty cent at all, and we will get that bubble gum, because we can't get that candy bar. I'm finished.
Whenever, whenever the president calls for the vote.
Yes.
Councilman Andrews?
No.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
No.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
I would like Andre to explain it to me one more time, I won't make no mistake.
So this, this motion is to increase the, the garbage collection. If you're not in favor of an increase, then you would vote no.
No, thank you.
So I'd like to make my motion again. I'd like to make my motion...
Go back to the main motion.
Yeah, main motion was...
For no increase to the residents' fees, and you keep the garbage service as is.
Yes.
Yes, should, excuse me, shouldn't there be somewhere in that motion that, that this, that the city subsidizes this, and it's going to cost the city a half a million dollars? I mean, it's not like we just vote to say, oh, yeah, we don't want to increase.
Now, we're going back, we're going back through this again, so this time, see, that's what happened last time. We're going back through this again. It, it don't make sense for us to keep going over this again. Steve had said that once, and this time, see, that's how I got lost last time, when Sam said no increase, I never got a chance to vote. So are we going to go through this again?
So I just made my motion.
Second.
So the motion on the table is to have no increase in garbage fees, and you keep the garbage service as is.
Councilman Andrews?
No.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
No.
Councilman Divatario?
Yes, aye.
Councilman Leon?
No.
Councilman Wells?
Andre, explain it to me again, what I'm voting for.
So if you don't want an incre, if you don't want any increases, and keep the service as is, you would vote yes. If you, if you're in favor of an increase with some kind of change to the services, or some kind of increase, you would vote no. This motion is for no increase in the same service.
Okay, no increase in the same service?
Correct.
I'm voting yes.
So both of them have failed two to three.
I got a question. Do we really feel like the public knows that, you know, knows, knows about this? I didn't, I haven't seen anything in the Daily Star or anywhere, except, except Councilwoman Gonzalez's Facebook, that the city is even considering going from two collections a week to one collection a week. That is a major cultural change, a major cultural change for this, for this city, yet we haven't asked anybody. We haven't publicized it, we haven't had a public hearing on it, we just sitting here going, yeah, let's, let's just do this. I got a problem with that.
I'll make, I'll make another stab at this here. I make a motion for twice a week collection with an increase of six dollars and forty cents, and recycling at an, at a charge of twenty-seven cents to be added to the bill, which means that, um, so it's less than fifty cents.
I'll second that.
So the motion is, is another option, and that is the twice a week for six forty, but the charge for the recycling would only be twenty-seven cents.
Correct, which is the hard costs according to our spreadsheet.
If we have a motion seconded.
Councilman Andrews?
No.
Councilman Divatario?
No.
Councilman Leon?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
That's all the motions I got.
With that being said, I, I don't, you know, Mr. President, again, do we really feel like, as a council, that the public is aware that we are making this monumental change in a service that the city provides?
Okay, we could do this, Mr. Leon, I have no problem with it. Let's table this item again, have it publicized in the, in our daily journal, which is the Daily Star. Also, I could ask the city to make sure that they put this information up on their website. I make a motion to table this item until our July, what is that?
Twenty-fifth?
July twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Twenty-fifth meeting.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
New business, item number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve a request by Hammond's Best LLC owner and J.D. Klein applicant to rezone 207 South Cherry Street per survey by Max Bowden, Inc., dated four twenty-five twenty-three, from RM dash two to MX dash CBD, District Two. Lacy.
So we had lots of discussion in the public hearing. I think the thing that I kept hearing coming up was the issues of parking and discussion about that. Just a reminder that whatever they do put forward as going into the building, um, does specify a business license, and so that, at that time, the parking is evaluated, and if there is not appropriate parking onsite in compliance with the zoning, then that can't go forward. So there's that extra check on parking.
Anyone else from the public? Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Item number two was...
I make a motion to table.
We're actually going to table this one as well.
Okay, table.
Who is the second?
We don't have a second.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Resolutions, none, old business, number one.
I would request to table this one, since it's related to our garbage and recycling discussion.
That's what I was going to...
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
New business, resolution number one.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into the annual maintenance agreement, including mowing and litter pickup for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, between Hammond and the state of Louisiana, DOTD, Office of Engineering, Lacy Landrum.
This is our annual mowing contract. As I indicated when we received this and sent it over to the council, the Louisiana Municipal Association and the mayors all went to Capitol Hill in, in hopes of getting more reimbursement money for these services that are performed across the state. This contract covers the city of Hammond, cutting the state right-of-ways as described in the areas. These include Morrison, they include Morris and Thomas, they include portions of University, Cherry, there's, all the description is laid out in the contract itself. This is our annual contract, it is the same amount of reimbursement that we have received in past years. Unfortunately, there is no increase to this. However, because these are important streets that do run through the center of town, we do encourage you to adopt this so that we can continue to keep them mowed, rather than having them look like our interstates where maybe the grass is as tall as myself.
Anyone from the public on this resolution? Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Resolution number two was brought to my attention and asked to be tabled, due to the fact of the wording in the resolution, and it will be submitted for our next council meeting.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Reports, mayor?
I'd like to thank our sponsors and Team Hammond for putting on a successful Fourth of July event. It was a great show, and I think, uh, people really enjoyed it, so hats off to Team Hammond, and thank you, couldn't have done it without our sponsors.
Any council reports?
I was just going to comment that the fireworks show was exceptional this year, I enjoyed it, so commend Hammond, and glad that we do this, and hope we do it every year.
Wanted to ask about the speed hump, um, equipment. Is it in its way of getting fixed soon, or y'all got an update status on that?
That's, that's the update that I had just given you, is the last one that I have. I do not know if that machine has come back from the shop yet. It was at Club Deluxe on...
Cat, cat distributorship on Club Deluxe is working on.
Okay, good deal, thank you.
Lacy, the light on NA James, they haven't got to it yet. Could you follow up on that for me? And I do have so, two meetings set up tomorrow morning, uh, with some, from the city in the park, to look at some things that need to be taken care of, and I'll follow up with you after I meet with those department heads. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.